Muffled?
Actually, no, it's pretty clear.
Oh, good. Well, we're just waiting for our CIO and our, one of our colleagues to come back into the room, then we'll get started.
I'm just having an apple, so I will mute you for this.
Oh. We hope it's a very fine Northwest apple, Oregon.
It is. Yum. Fresh from new seasons.
Great. So, here we are, back reconvened in our work session for the afternoon. We're also expecting Commissioner Rogers via Zoom. We just don't have him quite yet. So, we have a very full agenda for the remainder of the afternoon. Our first topic is a state forest update, and we have three outside speakers that I'd like to welcome up. And Commissioner Willie, Commissioner Rogers will be dialing in by Zoom, so if you want to move over here, you're more than welcome to. It's totally up to you.
I'll do it after this.
Sure. Great. Thank you. So, welcome, and I'll have you introduce yourselves so that I don't do anything wrong with names. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner, for inviting us here to talk about state forest management. My name is Mike Cafareta. I'm the district forester.
Had that problem this morning. Our, just once, our staff usually figures it out pretty quickly. So, keep going.
I'm the district forester here in Forest Grove, your local representative to talk about forest issues. We do wildland fire protection. It's probably our biggest mission this time of the year when everybody contributes if we need any fire suppression in the local area. Obviously, we do private forest land management. If you're familiar with Oregon's Forest Practice Act, and we implement that with small landowners and help them and large landowners with their forest management questions. And then today here, we're talking about state. Here to talk about state forest management. And I know some of you are very familiar with that, and it's good to see some familiar faces today.
Hang on one second, because I'm not sure Commissioner Therese has the benefit of hearing you when this.
I'm, I'm, I'm here, and I can hear. Thank you very much.
Okay. All righty. Great. So, keep.
I also get the Star Trek version, so.
That's what we're trying to work out, so. Go ahead.
Okay, that's great. And so, I just wanted in the audience to mention and welcome Stephanie Beal. Stephanie Beal is in our, the role I call the chief forester for the Tillamook State Forest here on this side of the coast range. And so, she works with all of our units to make sure that we do a high-quality job implementing our forest management plans and work well with our communities. And so, you'll be seeing more of Stephanie in the future. If we had three seats up here, she would give the opening part of this presentation, but we, we drew straws, and, and we'll get there anyway. And then next to me is Liz Dent. Liz, would you like to self-introduce, or should I?
Sure. Yeah. My name is Liz Dent. Is this, is this working?
Yes.
Okay, great. There we go. Better? Thank you. Yeah, so my name is Liz Dent, and I serve as the state forest division chief with Oregon Department of Forestry. So, I'm overseeing the entire program managing state forest lands throughout the state, from Astoria down to the California border and over into Klamath County.
Great.
Wow, that's, that's quite a variety of forest lands.
It is.
Throughout Oregon, too.
It absolutely is.
Different types of forests, so. Okay. So, today, it looks like we're going to be focusing in on the Tillamook State Forest.
That's right. We'll be focusing in on the, basically, the 40,000 acres that are in Washington County in the context that they're managed as part of a larger land base, and some of the trade-offs and decisions that are coming up for the Board of Forestry and, and all this community that helps manage state forests. Just, I thought it'd be nice to have a quick primer on state forests here. Some of you are new, and so maybe we could just go to the next slide. And so, you know, the Tillamook burn, many of you have heard about that, 1933, it burned again in '39, burned again in '45, a six-year itch, burned in 1951. So, it's a series of catastrophic fires on what was then private lands, that, that burned those private lands. Private landowners salvaged them, you know, cut all the big trees that were of any value, turned them over to the counties in lieu of paying taxes. And if you're not familiar with that story, and the counties then deeded them to the state in return for a portion of the revenue. And, and so, you know, when you look at the state forest land, there's a picture there that helps you understand, you know, why do we have these relatively young forests that don't have a lot of snags and legacy things? It's because of that, that history, which really is an important component for all of us as we think about how to manage these, these forests. So, in that, you know, 40,000 acres went, came to Washington County, and then were deeded to the state. Next slide. There we go. All right. So, we know, we do think of ourselves as a forest that's right on the edge of the metro area. You know, it's 45 minutes from downtown Portland, and we're, we have Highway 6 running right through the heart, and Highway 26 right there on the north end. So, we do have a lot of users that come from Washington County. I look across all these neighborhoods of people, myself included, on a tiny lot. And, and we do recreate in the forest, as many of your, your residents do, and we welcome them there. Like I said, 45,000 acres, but what's unique about that is it's, it's contiguous with the Tillamook County forest, which is just to the west of us there, and contiguous to the Klatsepp Forest, Klatsepp State Forest, to the north. And so, we manage it in many ways as one land base. Users can't tell the difference. And so, everything from regulations to firewood permits to hiking trails, they are all intermixed. So, it's, it's, you can't tell the line on the ground. Many benefits to Washington County. Go ahead and change the slide to you. I put just a few slides in here to see, and one is the revenue that comes into your county. And so, for Washington County, if you look at that slide, the very bottom line there shows the five-year average is $10 million, and a 10-year average is $9 million, so somewhere in that range. And you can see there's a low there, a 3.7 in 2017, and then, you know, the high of like, you know, 14 million last year. The ebb and flow is something that happens in forest management, and purchasers, we give them two or three years to harvest the timber sales. We get a better price because of that. We think you get more revenue because of that. But that does end up with some ebb and flow, and that's, that's what you see in there. And obviously, we don't control the timber prices. We're part of a much larger forest economy. But we try to have a consistent sustained flow of wood. So, we've sold the same amount of wood for the last 10 years, averaging 61 million board feet a year from our Forest Grove District. And, and that's our 10-year average, and we've done that every single year with a very small variation, leading to some differences in annual revenue, but we think higher overall, so.
Mike, if, real quickly, the forest, the timber prices have been really high over the last period of time. I don't know how long. I had heard that through, I guess it was beginning of 20, 20 and 19, so I, you can correct me where I am wrong in there. But so, would that imply that we could expect a little bit of a higher revenue stream in 2020?
I think that they've been relatively high for the last four or five years without a lot of variation. So, I don't think it would go up from now, because all those sales we've sold are at relatively similar high prices. Little dip, you know, March, April, March, you know, this year from the virus. Those prices were down a little bit from that. But I think back to 2009, 2010, you know, we're much higher than that. And those, all those sales are behind us, so we're, we're cutting high-value wood. That's right. So, that, and, you know, I think what doesn't show in this chart is the jobs that go with that. And so, you know, I don't have a chart of, of how many jobs per million board feet, but certainly, there's a whole another cycling of economic activity that happens with the mill and banks, and the mill and Stimson, and the people that work in those mills, and, you know, and our staff and all those things. So, there's an economic cycling that this is related to that's important, probably, for the, for the county economy and, and, and jobs and social benefits. Yeah, so I'm getting to a little bit of that. The question is, is there an economic value for the recreation program? Oh, yeah, sorry. I could hear you. And there certainly is, Commissioner.
One thing is for sure, if, when I don't do it, it certainly gets called.
I think we need a remote switch for you.
Darn thing on, you know.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, to get to your question about the economic activity caused by forest recreation. We, so we have, in Washington County, two developed campgrounds, and you can see some of that information up there, five trailheads. And we also have this non-designated dispersed camping that people do. And we're part of that larger, there's more campgrounds on the Tillamook side as well. And so, that's a lot of nights. If you look up there in Washington County, you're talking about 5,000 nights and bringing in $34,000 in direct revenue that is split with the counties. And what you can't see here is all the motorcycle sales and gas tax cycling, and people buying outdoor recreational gear and traveling here to take part in recreational activities. Kind of like the timber values, there's a bunch of economic cycling, too, that's harder to measure. There have been studies. They're usually at a much macro level. I can't speak to those directly, but Steph's more actually versed in that than I am, and we could provide some information.
There was one that went back around 2001 or 2002, done by some professors, I think, out of Montana, maybe, and Oregon State, but that's been a while ago.
Yeah. And same with the timber stuff, that they do those studies periodically, and they relate to how many jobs there are. But a really active recreation use. It's a busy place, our forest. And then just to mention the water and the wildlife, that these are important priorities for us in meeting our greatest permanent value mandates. There's a picture here. This is above the Gales Creek campground, and if you go to the Gales Creek campground and walk down to the river and walk upstream, you'll find we replaced a lot of large wooden. That's one example. And it's just incredible how it changed that stream. And this is actually Liz's Forte, her background, and you've actually drove that project, I think. But to steal her thunder, it, it took it from a stream that was a bedrock shoot to many large pools and drops, and just this really intense ecosystem that, it's just a neat place. And for miles, we've done that there.
Better for fish and bugs and birds and frogs and turtles.
Exactly. And, and the habitat side, the same way, there's a picture there of a stand we've thinned to try and help generate some more understory and generate some more, what we call an older forest and complex forest that have more going on than our closed, single-canopy stands. And so, our current forest management center is around a lot, around that idea of generating this diverse set of habitats for all of Oregon's native wildlife. Okay, I think that's the last slide. Oh, yeah, a few take-home messages here, that we work really hard to help manage our forest, providing revenue, supporting this recreation, these public use opportunities on our water quality, our riparian areas, and trying to create these native wildlife habitats. And the last thing, which we're really here to talk about today, is planning for the future. And, you know, we've been on this same forest management plan. It was first passed in 2001. It was pretty much groundbreaking for us around an integrated forest management plan, as opposed to a timber harvest management plan that was more out of the 70s and the 80s. We revised it in 2011, and there's a variety of reasons for that, but I would really consider that to be a revision. It was largely the same plan with a few shifts, but it wasn't a new way to think about how we manage our forest. And we've been working on that since 2011, and I said, I mentioned 10 years of timber harvest. It was the same amount. Well, that's from a plan that's about 10 years old. And Liz has been working super hard with the Board of Forestry and with stakeholders and with FGLAC, trying to ask and answer, what is the best plan moving forward? Is it the same one, or is it something that's a little different? And I think I would turn it over, I'd take any questions, obviously. Other than that, I would turn it over to Liz to help with the next conversation.
Any questions for Mike before I jump in? Great. Well, again, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here with all of you commissioners, so thank you for your time and your service during this incredibly challenging time that we face, not only here in Oregon, but around the world. So, I really do appreciate all that you're doing to help your communities. Within that context, we're also asking you to think about forest management, and so sometimes that doesn't seem like a high priority during these times. But we are living and breathing it, and it clearly does contribute to the benefits to Oregonians. And that really is at the guts of everything that we do on state forests. Mike, thank you. Did a great job of highlighting a couple of those key elements. We call it managing for greatest permanent value, which basically is a commitment to provide for economic, social, and environmental benefits over time for all Oregonians. And it's written into our, our mandates for managing these forest lands. We manage these lands without any tax base. We don't get any general fund. So, all the management of these lands is paid through, through the sale of timber. And Mike showed, when that revenue comes in, two-thirds of that is roughly, is distributed to the counties within which we manage, and a third stays with the division to help pay for our operations. So, in order to make all the good decisions on the ground that are happening here in your county on state forests, we have overarching planning documents at three scales. One is a very high-level forest management plan, we call it, and it covers large spatial areas and large temporal timeframes. So, 25-year plan covering, in this instance, about 600,000 acres for the lands that, that are managed here out of Washington County. Our planning then tiers down into implementation plans and annual operating plans. And the smaller that it tiers down, we get into specific harvest units, and we're thinking at a much smaller scale. So, really, what I was here to talk to you about today is this larger-scale planning, the large temporal and spatial scale planning of our forest management plan. As those plans lay out, they dictate all the, the policy framework for the decisions that are made at that annual basis that might be made around a road replacement or a trailhead, or, or various other services that come off of state forests. And those documents are adopted by the Board of Forestry. So, the Board of Forestry, after we revised the plan in 2011, took, we took a look at how things were going and determined that we were going to have a hard time continuing to cover the costs of our operations under the forest management plan that we're managing under right now. And so, we did, we, we took many activities to correct that. Excuse me, I'm having mask problems. One of which was some internal business improvements. We looked at some other sources of revenue, and we made a lot of really important gains there. The big piece was to revisit the forest management plan. So, the Board of Forestry asked us to look at changing the forest management plan to do two things. One is to improve conservation outcomes, and one is to improve financial outcomes. As we started going down the path of this work, the board also asked us to begin working on a habitat conservation plan. A habitat conservation plan is an agreement between a landowner, in this case, it's these Board of Forestry lands owned by Oregonians, and the federal agencies. And that agreement establishes conservation measures that would be put in place over the permit. It's, it's a permit, over the term of the permit for providing for conservation. And in exchange, we get assurances to manage. So, it is, it is essentially saying, hey, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, NOAA Fisheries, we're going to protect streams this way. We're going to provide terrestrial habitat in these ways, and in exchange, we want, you know, we're getting sort of the head nod from you that we can continue managing these lands under this forest management plan and this habitat conservation plan. So, the two work in tandem. The habitat conservation plan is in agreement with the services, the, the federal services, in this case, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and NOAA Fisheries. And the forest management plan is a document that is owned, if you will, by the Board of Forestry. And those two pieces work together to guide our management decisions on a year-to-year, decade-to-decade basis. So, the, one might wonder, well, why a habitat conservation plan? Habitat conservation plan that we are considering right now, we've been working with the services now for a couple of years under the direction of the board. We are thinking, we're striving for a permit period of 50 to 70 years. So, that hasn't been finalized by any stretch of the imagination, but you can, you can, you know, imagine a 50- to 70-year agreement with the regulatory agencies that oversee Compliance with the Endangered Species Act is an incredibly powerful plan to have, to guide management of these public lands. It provides, again, the certainty to manage, which translates to the certainty of conservation for the species. It translates to the certainty of timber production, which helps support timber-related economies. It translates to timber-related revenue that is distributed to the counties, the portion of the revenue that stays with the agency to help pay for our programs. And that type of certainty is just good business, and it's good for public forests. Without that, without an HCP, we're managing under a program that's called Take Avoidance. So, everyone has to comply with Endangered Species Act, Federal Endangered Species Act. The HCP is a mechanism for doing that in a programmatic way. 50 to 70 years, here's the agreement on how you're going to manage these lands, how you're going to provide for conservation. That's programmatic. Another way to comply with the Endangered Species Act is through what's called Take Avoidance, which is what we're doing right now. Under Take Avoidance, when I get, when we get down to those decisions that Mike and Steph are making on a year-to-year basis around any given harvest unit, we're having to go harvest unit by harvest unit, year by year, to determine if the decisions that we're making are going to comply with Endangered Species Act for threatening endangered species. So, it's very expensive. It, it involves surveys, looking for those species. And then, when we find them, any planning we've put into a timber sale that may get canceled, now we've wasted sort of those resources. There's also this uncertainty. We, best-laid plans, we're going to have a harvest unit that's going to go up for sale. Let's say, two years from now, we start conducting surveys, we find a bird, now we can't implement that harvest unit. So, the, it, it creates a great deal of uncertainty, and it's expensive. The other challenge of operating without a HCP is that we're subject to new listings. So, we know that there are species currently listed, the classic ones people think about, northern spotted owl, marble murelet, coho, several species of steelhead, some salamanders. We all, I think, are familiar with the, the laundry list. But we know there are species that are likely to be listed in the near future. And so, we kind of know what we're operating under at this moment with the particular listed species, but there's so much uncertainty about the ones that are coming. So, in an HCP that we're thinking about, we have actually included some species that we would want covered under the HCP that are potentially to be, that could potentially be listed in the coming years, and so that would bring some additional certainty for us. Another issue of uncertainty is that we're subject to the determination of the services on what types of protection strategies they think need to be in place to protect the listed species, which is perfectly appropriate. So, that means, again, we're sort of, it's taken out of our hands. We're not really a part of as closely a, a big of a driver in terms of what we can do to protect those species, unless, again, unless we were to have an HCP. The other problem without, about not having an HCP is that the Endangered Species Act allows for what's called third-party litigation. And we've suffered, we've, we've experienced that a couple of times, where a conservation community has sued the, either an agency or the state for protection of an endangered species. So, that happened down on Elliott for the marble murelet, and then we're currently under litigation with a claim that we're taking coho habitat on our own Board of Forestry lands. And those are, are all part of this, of a, a system that creates a great deal, again, a great deal of uncertainty for us for managing these lands. If we were to have an HCP, the services have essentially condoned and endorsed our approach to conserving the species. And so, it provides a layer of protection from that litigation and, and increases, again, the certainty to continue managing under the conditions of that forest, of the habitat conservation plan. And should, in some circumstance, any conservation group not feel good about the terms of the forest, of the habitat conservation plan, they would actually sue the federal services, not the state. And so, it's really, again, I guess I would sum up to say, the benefit of working with Habitat Conservation Plan is it kind of insulates us from all that uncertainty and, and gives us a chance to, to be a part of the solution for protecting the species and being able to make good, long-term business decisions. So, I'll just tell you, so that's sort of my take, if you will, on the benefits of an HCP and why I'm supportive and helping to lead our agency in this direction. When we think about the board's direction back in 2012 was to improve conservation and financial outcomes, an HCP really allows us to do that. If you think about it in terms of the long-term benefits for conservation and the long-term certainty that's good for business. So, in my view, it's one of the better tools we have for being able to truly improve conservation and financial outcomes. So, I thought I'd just give you a quick thumbnail sketch of where we are with the HCP. We've got, we've been working for about two and a half years now with the services, and we've got some draft strategies together. The HCP is for all of our lands west of the Cascades. It's roughly 635,000 acres. We're looking for TENE coverage, ESA coverage for 16 species. That's both terrestrial and aquatic species and a couple of amphibians. We are currently have two different configurations for what those conservation areas are going to look like on the landscape. Both a combination of terrestrial conservation areas and riparian conservation areas. And our current estimate, and this is preliminary, we're still working with the services, so I suspect that, I, I expect the numbers will change a little bit, but I just want to give you a flavor, about 48% to 52% of the land base would be in, managed for conservation for either aquatic or terrestrial species, or in some cases, that completely overlaps. So, it's a significant contribution to conservation. We can manage in those areas, and that's some of the, the more work that we're doing. And that actual percentage may change as we continue to figure out what that's going to look like.
When you say when you're managing, you can still cut wood in those areas?
That's correct. Yep. The, any, any harvesting would be done for the purpose of improving habitat for the species.
In Forest Grove, our perception, it'd be a pretty light number. You know, it's sort of, it's a very light-touch management for the benefit of the species, so you shouldn't think about that as being a, a revenue raiser.
Right. It'll be bigger, probably, in the Tillamook County portion of Tillamook State Forest, where there's more Swiss needle cass and alder. So, those stands really do need some active management to get them on a quicker trajectory to providing habitat for the protected species. This does equate to, at this point, again, draft, we would anticipate an average harvest level, timber harvest level of anywhere between 196 to 206 million board feet a year. That is a reduction as compared to what we do right now. It's roughly a 10% lower than our current harvest levels. So, there is a trade-off here, and that's what, in my view, when it comes to managing public land, that's the conversation that the policymakers are going, that's the hard work that they have to do, is what, what do we do with those trade-offs? Now, with that said, there, there are ways of implementing that change in harvest level so that it would be a slow decline in harvest, so with a 70-year plan, it could take decades to get to an actual decrease in harvest. We could glide down to that, so there'd be plenty of time to plan accordingly, both from our own division, making sure we're staffed appropriately, but also for the communities. We often think about timber harvest, of course, as sort of the be-all and end-all of, of revenue. But I would submit that over 70 years, the social-political environment is undoubtedly going to be different than it is today. And this kind of agreement really does represent a commitment, a long-term social-political commitment, and I think could be used to leverage other sources of revenue over time. So, I just would close with a couple of next steps, or I could pause there for questions.
A quick question again on.
Yes, Commissioner.
That you just went through. You mentioned a, a number of board feet, and could you repeat that number? And is this very specifically for the Tillamook State Forest, or?
No, the, thank you. The hundred and, the number was 196 to 206 million board feet, and it's for all of our lands west of the Cascades. We currently do, to put it in perspective, about 225 million board feet a year.
That would be a cut in half. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing here something. Let's start again.
Yeah. So, we anticipate an average harvest level, based on our current, this is draft, and so I would say I anticipate the number to change. But right now, we're estimating 196 to 206. It's a range, million board feet on average every year for 70 years. And so, the trade-off here is, in my view, the way I think about it is, it's a decrease in timber harvest as compared to what we do right now. We know timber harvest will decrease as compared to what we do right now without an HCP. I can almost guarantee that that is the case. So, the question becomes, under an HCP, if, if a person or a stakeholder or a landowner or a purchaser is concerned about a decrease in harvest level, to me, the question is, is the decrease with an HCP the same or less than a decrease than without an HCP? We, we are just entering a time when we will have increasing expectations for protecting more and more species on the landscape, which will ultimately decrease harvest levels, even if we don't get an HCP. So, that's one thing. And then, the second context, I would add, commissioners, that the trade-off then also is that certainty. Again, I, you'll hear me say that a lot, because that truly is. Again, I, you'll hear me say that a lot because that truly is the blue ribbon standard that an HCP provides.
And again, just one last thing. You said that would be a 10% reduction?
At the high level, so if you think about, we currently do about 225 million board feet, and the high level of that range I gave was 206 million board feet.
You have to remember those numbers are, they're pretty round, right? It's an awful lot of assumptions that, your growth rates and, you know, access and all sorts of things. But I think one, you know, the reason we're here, if I might, is Liz and company have been working really hard on outreach over the last couple of years, as stakeholders and FTLAC, as a statutory group giving advice to the board. This era of pandemic has made that more difficult. And so it's just a chance for us to come and explain some of what's going on and hear some of your perspectives, and that helps you sort of understand the culture of FTLAC and the county, Washington County is a very important county in this equation. It's, you know, we call it the Goldilocks district, and we have the best ground, right? It's not too steep, it's not too wet, it's not too dry, like, we have great land here. And so it's just a really important, you're an important county, we just wanted to sort of talk about some of these things and hear what you had to say and think, so. And I can't see Commissioner Treese, but I think you're out there too.
We can, and you would if you could see one of these monitors. So let me start with Commissioner Treese. Do you have any questions at this stage?
No, I just want to know when we can go on a board tour for these beautiful sites.
If I could just provide some historical, a little bit of historical background now, my 20 years on the board. The board in the past has consistently talked about a balance and did not see timber revenues as the be-all and end-all of everything. I think we have subscribed in a strong way in past resolutions and orders and past policy statements towards the greatest permanent value.
Which board, Commissioner Scout?
This board.
Our past boards, this board of Washington County.
Ah, okay, thank you.
So in my 20 years on this board, now we have three new members two years ago. Commissioner Rogers and myself are from those past 20 years. But I don't know, I don't think we've taken any policy statements in the last two years, but over the years, over the 20 years, we've probably had two or three occasions to make policy statements in support of the greatest permanent value and a balance. In spite of that, on a split vote, we, two, two and one, we went into the class action lawsuit. And I think Alan can stop me. There's a lot that I can't share that he and I have sat in very recently on a briefing from the attorney representing the plaintiffs of the class action suit, but I think that it's fair to say, I think publicly has been stated that a number of the other commissioners leading the effort really talked about timber being sort of the, sort of the primary purpose of the forest. That has not been this county's stated policy in the past. I think I've tread on, safe enough grounds there? Yeah.
So everything Commissioner Scouton has said is true. We did, as a new board, have the prior policy distributed and decided that, as far as we were concerned, we wanted to continue that. We didn't see a reason to change from that beneficial policy. So before I go on-
No, go ahead. I've got some, I've got some of the notes, and so I've just been tracking along, so go ahead and continue your thought there.
So when I was with Commissioner Scouton, when we had the annual Council of Forest Trust Lands meeting down at the AOC conference last fall, and he is our area representative to that work, I knew from conversations with fellow colleagues in countywide, statewide commission colleagues, that it was disconcerting that FTLAC, the Forest Trust Land Advisory Committee, was not having regular meetings and concerned that the chair was testifying at different commission meetings, Board of Forestry Commission meetings, on behalf, you know, representing himself as the chair and testifying as though that was an FTLAC decision. And so as, I really appreciate your being here, as the Board of Forestry is looking, it's a board, right, not a commission? So I misspoke on that testimony, but it was to the Board of Forestry. So as this draft Forest Management Plan and the draft Habitat Conservation Plan goes to that Board of Forestry, I do want to support our commission weighing in on this plan.
That would be wonderful. I would support that, too.
I don't know if, as our representative through FTLAC, you want to put that together and have us put our weight behind that, or how procedurally for us to go through, but I agree with everything that you've laid out here in terms of the business values, the financial outcomes, and the conservation outcomes. Certainly, I had the opportunity to, when I was a Metro Counselor for 12 years, see the economic, social and environmental values through those practices since 1995. And to be dealing with forestry plans and habitat plans that go out 50 to 70 years, it's a long time compared to our annual or five-year planning. But then again, foresters tend to think 100 and 200 years out. It just blows my mind. I mean, my head almost literally exploded, or it felt like it was exploded the first time that, on a tour, I had the benefit of that. And we know climate change is real and that we're all going to have to adapt to it as an entire planet, and that we, as in people, humans, have both negative impacts, but we also have the opportunity for beneficial impacts as well. And I think the Habitat Conservation Plan, in concert with the Forest Management Plan, go towards that. I would like to see us continue with the balanced strategy to make sure that we are supportive of Habitat Conservation Plans so that the county continues to have the benefit of harvest revenues, but not at the expense of making sure that future generations here in Washington County have the opportunity for these forests. And I forgot to call on Commissioner Rogers as well. My bad.
No, there's nothing more for me to add. I think Dick depicted accurately what has transpired in the past, and I just thank him for his service and being there as a representative.
We call that the Star Trek effect.
Yeah.
Nice.
Talking at full speed. Well, what I might suggest is I, maybe I might suggest that I work with county council to come up with some kind of a draft statement and then have the rest of the board look at it and play with it, and then we can come up with something that we could possibly submit as a board. Does that work?
Yes, that would be wonderful. It's my understanding that the Board of Forestry will be meeting in October to adopt the plan. But I also heard, if I'm right, through the letter that I distributed, I think either you distributed or I distributed, I can't remember, isn't there a meeting tomorrow?
Yes, yes. So there's a Board of Forestry meeting tomorrow. That is an update.
Okay.
And we'll be sharing with them everything that I just shared with you, the sort of gross scale, numbers, percent acres, et cetera. And then we will get, there's a little, there's more detail around what are the riparian strategies look like and that kind of thing. And so we're set up for that tomorrow. There's always a spot on the board meetings for Commissioner testimony, historic, I mean, that is set aside for Forest Trust Lands Advisory Committee. The board chair, I'm a son, always makes allowances for any commissioners that want to come up and speak at that time. So there is that.
Will that meeting be available on Zoom?
Yes, we are meeting remotely slash virtually for the rest of the year. So I can work to get you the link to that.
Zoom contact or the?
Would you like me to, okay.
Yeah. And what time will that be?
I was afraid you were going to ask that. I think we start before lunch, so I want to say our agenda item starts around 11 o'clock. But I'll get the agenda, can I just, I'll get you the agenda and the Zoom contact.
That'd be great. Between the two of us. But I think, I think we can do a thumbs up today, just so you have a message of encouragement-
Right.
-on everything we've heard, and then we can follow up for your next meeting with a more formal letter.
That's great. And we're, because of the circumstances with not being able to have normal testimony in person, the board is extending their time period where they accept testimony, so it's through, I want to say, August 8th. So you could take your time if you wanted to submit something from this commission to the board on this agenda item, there's still time to do that.
Well, we can, we'll follow up for sure with a letter, but I think it would be great to have some verbal testimony.
Okay, yeah. I, the only thing, I have a 1:00 PM, it's that 1:00 PM, Plaquenhamus, Washington County, Oldham County Conference with the governor's advisors on COVID at 1:30, but that aside, the rest of my late morning and early afternoon or afternoon or-
Well, if it lands in there, let me know, because I know I'm free then.
Okay.
I would like to call out just a couple other next steps, and Octo, so that is the update is tomorrow. October 6 is an actual decision by the board, and that is, do they want us to keep moving forward on the HCP? We will have much solid, much more solidified the strategies, we'll have a better, more confidence in our estimate of outcomes, and we'll be able to say, here's what happens with or without an HCP. And they'll, they'll have some information to decide if they want us to keep working on this or not. So that's not adopting the plan, it's simply saying, keep moving and go into the federal process, it's called the NEPA process, to move it through its final stages. And then after that's done, that's still a good year-long of work before the board would actually adopt an HCP and a Forest Management Plan. We hit on Forest Trust Lands Advisory Committee, they are not meeting right now. I stay in close contact with Chair Yamamoto, understand the pressures that they're feeling in their communities, but we remain available and really wanting then to make sure that you all have the information you need to weigh in on these really important decisions.
Well, I would like to comment on that because, you know, I talk with county commissioners, as I'm sure my colleagues do regularly, but especially during these COVID times. And we're all having to make room for business that has to proceed. And so to take a position that carte blanche, FTLAC won't be meeting virtually, is, I think, too harsh. And I guess I'm left with just expressing that to my colleagues and asking them if you need any other support to change this.
Okay.
Okay.
Because we do have a variety of counties that make up FTLAC, and to not be recognizing where each of these counties are at by lack of meetings just doesn't match our times.
And we would do everything we can as a department to try to make that, those meetings as, you know, easy as possible, setting up all the Zooms and et cetera and coordinating, all the coordination that needs to happen there. So we're happy to help.
It may be that we need to write a letter as a Washington County Board of Commissions for submission to the Chair of FTLAC, perhaps.
The next meeting is scheduled for August 28th, and there's a couple others scheduled throughout the rest of the year. So I know-
That's the Forest Trust Land Counties scheduled meeting?
Yep, FTLAC. In the meantime, we are here, we're here at the district level. Mike Cafarat and staff, always an excellent resource. I would make it a priority if you need, you know, more conversation, questions answered, always, always available.
Excuse me, didn't Commissioner Willie, were you going to say something?
No, I'm, no, I'm just listening to, I'm trying to get up to speed on the FTLAC part of this because that's been Dick's area, and so I've just been basically listening. And again, I had been briefed by Mike coming into this, so I'm okay with this.
I also want to thank Chair Harrington for making sure that we push this forward. It's not appropriate to not be meeting and not discussing these important issues.
Any other questions or comments for our guest speakers? I'm remembering, I have one. Stephanie, I need you to make sure I write down your last name.
It's Beal, he is a boy, B-E-A-L-L.
Thank you very much. And I assume that the three of you know our contact information or know how to contact us, so please, if you would make sure that Commissioner Scouton and I get the logistics for tomorrow, he and I'll make sure that we get one of the two of us there. Most likely, it'll be him because he has a much less window problem than I do.
I just have a half-hour problem.
Yeah, exactly. And then I think we'll, we'll get some staff help on a letter to get that submitted by August 8th as well, and then we'll endeavor to stay on the journey, both for October 6th, but in the longer term that you've talked about, and follow up with FTLAC as well.
And Chair Harrington, if I might, we were going to give you an update on the Sammernbury Trail.
Oh, yes.
But I would love to come back with a little more time and offer to come back in a couple of weeks or a couple of months and do that with a little more time and talk about the Sammernbury Trail. I would want to just say thanks for the leadership from the county on that project and, yeah, from Commissioner Willie.
Commissioner Willie's helped on that.
Yep. And also your county staff, Diame Valentine, and forgetting the name in your county planning department, I'm embarrassed to say on short notice, but they've been very helpful in guiding us on how to work with the county as we start working on some land use planning as well as the planning that's going on, so.
Yep. Our last update on that, I can't remember the timeframe, but I know it was really, it was fun and exciting to see the level of master planning that's gone into that and the different segments and moving it forward for the financial resources to eventually get it built.
Yeah, our next STEA meeting is August 7th, and that is a day that I agreed to be on the final interview for the Equity Officer, so that may be a little bit conflicting, but certainly would look forward to an update on that, so we'll certainly coordinate. Diame always attends those meetings, so he can give us a little bit of an update. But yes, we're, we're moving ahead in a variety of different ways with all the other counties, and it's going to be a fun and a great project, so.
So Mike, I really appreciate that opportunity. We, we've just gone through sort of a hiccup on our context, our meeting context. Back in January, January, June, back in June, we took stock of, okay, all the things that we'd kind of put off to the side while we were dealing with COVID. We were in Phase 1 and looking forward to going into Phase 2, and now we're accepting of the reality, as the numbers clearly demonstrated last week, that we are not successful in a healthy mode of operation under Phase 1. So we're having to go through that and put some, some of our brain share and time share into that as a board. In addition, involvement with regard to how do we operate schools with, under COVID, right? So more community change going there. So while, so we're having to take a little bit of a stock in- in terms of our planning out of our work plan for the remainder of the year. So I heard you talk about Salmonberry maybe in the next couple of months. We aspire to do that, but we'll have to make sure to get it in our, in the mix. And so we'll, we'll work on that and hopefully make it happen.
It's all going well, just know that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I can give you the Reader's Digest version, maybe at the beginning of a workstation periodically, just like a five-minute verse to keep you up to speed on that.
But it's not, I know it will be a fun, happy topic, right? So I think by, you know, October, it might be really nice to spend a half an hour on Salmonberry Trail.
On a fun topic, can I?
Yes, exactly.
We'll have some great pictures, I can, I'll show you great pictures, or even a tour if you'd like to go walk a little bit. Be happy to do that.
Great.
Yeah, you, you remember that we went on a helicopter ride on the Salmonberry Trail? We got lots of pictures from there, too. And so, yeah, we can.
We can do something.
Certainly bring you up to speed.
I'm very much a terrestrial person. Boats and planes and helicopters aren't great for me, so.
Well, these are still pictures, I think we probably have a video in there, too. But I won't, I certainly won't provide that for you then if you're, I don't want to just get airsick while you're sitting here at the dial, so.
Yeah, that's possible. Terrific, well, thank you for being here today, and thank you again for staying healthy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care.
I have a little bit of a write-up that might come in handy. I can leave that with someone to.
Oh, yes, that would be great.
Extra copies, too. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, we'll move on to our next topic. Sorry, I ran over a little bit on the last one. The next topic is the proposed policy allowing temporary expansion of businesses into private parking lots during the COVID-19 emergency. And we've got Andy Back back with us.
I'm here again. Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. So as you said, this is about a temporary policy regarding expansion of businesses into private parking lots in unincorporated Washington County. So we're going to be before you on July 28th with the policy. That'll show up as a resolution and order. So sort of the reasons we're doing this is it's a recognition that really full utilization of indoor spaces, whether it's a restaurant or a store, is, is tough these days, given the COVID-19 and all the implications of, of the virus. And we also sort of recognize that it seems like people are more comfortable outside than inside. So we want to, to make sure that if there's a way to allow folks to use their parking lots for things that they normally would not do. So this policy would not, would, would only apply in the unincorporated area, so where we have land use authority, not in the cities. It would allow outdoor activities in the private parking lots without a permit. And it would be subject to certain limitations, but it would sort of be self-enforcing. They wouldn't have to contact us at all if they didn't want to. This is consistent with, I think, your direction on other programs where we want to facilitate business activity, and hopefully it complements those programs. So we will essentially be temporarily suspending enforcement on our code. So our code, right now, when you get a land use permit, you're required to have X amount of parking spaces. And the code says those spaces are supposed to be used for parking. So that's really the part of the code that's being suspended. We're modeling what we're doing after the city of Beaverton, who implemented this a few weeks ago. It's also tied, in terms of a timing standpoint, to the emergency declaration that you did previously today. And so as long as you continue to make those emergency declarations, this policy would be in place. So unfortunately, I think that's going to go on for a while now. I think I'll leave it at that. There's a lot of sort of detailed requirements that are in your packet, and will show up again in the RNO next week. But we don't have to run through those. But if you have questions on them, I'm clearly happy to answer those.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner, oh, everybody's heads are shaking now. I just have one item, not 100% sure. On item number four, the expansion area does not include any Americans with Disability Act ADA parking spaces, loading areas, or travel pathways. What I'm imagining is there are several businesses where the ADA parking is, they're the parking spots closest to the main entry. If a business expands, let's say it's a restaurant, for lack of imagination on my part, and if the check-in area for the restaurant is moved from inside to then outside, if they're not able to move the park, the entrance for that outside desk close enough to the ADA, well, I'm looking for the flexibility so that they can temporarily move those ADA parking spaces closest to the entrance.
I think that's.
And number four, I wasn't sure how to take that.
I think we can clarify that language when we come back, that if they have existing ADA spaces and want to relocate it, it's their responsibility to still meet the ADA.
Yeah, I don't, I just want to make sure they don't reduce any ADA parking and make sure that the location is appropriately convenient.
One other thing I do want to note, we, we looked at the sort of requirements, and will likely add something about OLCC permitting if you're serving alcohol, that most of their permits, if you're serving it right now, limit indoor use. So they'll have to make sure that they're okay with OLCC to do anything outside.
Now, this applies only to unincorporated, okay, great. Okay, any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
We'll see you in a week.
All righty, thank you very much. And I think it will be good day of, since you'll have all the RNO details, that I think you said it was next Tuesday, the 28th. So during our, our first item on the agenda, where we see if there are any questions for formal action, if you could please be on board with that, because that'll be the, before the business meeting, at least the last time for us to give a heads up that we have questions. Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're 15 minutes ahead of schedule, so let me just check. Oh, it's Zoom, they're probably on Zoom. Our next topic is COVID-19 homeless strategy update. With Marnie Kyle and Leah. Hey, I'm sorry, I didn't see you in the audience. Well, plus with face masks, I'm, I'm not very good at recognizing people from the nose bridge up yet. Welcome.
I feel like that, good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board. Some of you must have went on Zoom this afternoon.
You did.
There, too.
Yes, on Zoom, somewhere, somewhere.
We're watching you.
So, good afternoon. I, I felt a little bit like that 80s saying, I don't remember what movie, but remember I'm back. I don't remember what movie. Sure, yeah. So I think we are six feet, but I think that typically, it, it doesn't necessarily show on screen. So I'm going to leave my mask on if, if you're able to hear okay. Leah's.
Am I even on? That's okay.
So I'm Marnie Kyle, Director of Health and Human Services, and I'm here with Leah Perkin.
Perkin Segley, yep, from the West Side Commons, thank you.
Yeah, so we're just here to give you an update on the COVID-19 homeless situation. So we can go to the next slide, please. There we go. Okay, thank you. So homeless populations are at elevated risk of being impacted by COVID-19. In a, in a homeless camping situation, as you can imagine, it would be difficult to practice physical distancing. It is very difficult when we have stay-at-home orders to stay at home. There can be a lack of access to sanitation supplies and facilities, hand washing facilities, lack of access to important information. And many of our homeless residents also have pre-existing conditions. So CDC and public health guidance was that homeless camps should be allowed to remain in place unless a safer alternative becomes available. But in, and we can go to the next slide, please. In Washington County, we were, we were beginning to receive and have continued to receive reports and concerns and complaints from residents about several large homeless camps in Washington County. And so we have about four pretty large 25 to 30 or more unorganized homeless camping places that are happening within Washington County. And they do have limited hand washing and sanitation stations. We have been able to get out a few, but it's really been limited. And as you know, our shelters are not operating during the summer. The existing camps, we really are very concerned about the conditions and about the spread of COVID within those camps. And, you know, it, it's not as if the campers just stay there and don't go out and about within our community. So there's, there's also the risk of general community widespread, even outside of the, the camps. Okay, next slide. So we pulled together the experts, which is Annette, of course, in our community, and some others, and really began to look at, well, what are the strategies? What can we do? How can we provide mitigation? And really, our approach for this, at this time, is really COVID prevention. It's COVID mitigation. I know that there is a larger ongoing homeless problem within the metro area and in Washington County. But our focus today is really preventing the spread of COVID. So we came up with four strategies that we're working to implement. So the first is the family promise shelters. And we expanded access to shelters for families and adult-only households experiencing homelessness. And so I believe to date, and, and Annette is in the audience, but I believe to date that we have of the three shelters, I know that we have one open. I believe Beaverton is also open, and we're still working on the, the Washington County Family Promise Shelter that's in Hillsborough. Oh, good, she's shaking her head right. It's all hot, hot off the press. The other thing is we have increased with our CARES funding, access to hotel vouchers, that we're really using those for individuals who need a hotel room because of their age or because of pre-existing medical conditions that make camping really less safe for them. We're also exploring safe RV parking options and identifying locations where RV campers can safely park and obtain access to different services. But we're going to spend most of our time talking about safe sleeping villages, which are organized camping solutions that provide safer options for the homeless campers. Okay, next slide, okay. And I think this is where we're going to let Leah take over.
So we've been working together for the last, I guess, month or so on a location. And as you know, West Side Commons is currently closed and not operating. And we really looked at the Washington County Fairgrounds, West Side Commons, as a, as a good place to locate this safe sleeping village. It's close to Transit, the county already owns it, so there's no issues with trying to get a permit from another type of property owner. There's access to power, water, it's large, and it's available for the duration of the need, which is to December 1st, when the winter shelters open. Next slide, please. So like Marnie said, it's to support up to 50 individuals, physical spacing to reduce close contact. This is a photo, I believe, from downtown Portland to kind of demonstrate what we're looking at. The area that we're looking at on West Side Commons is an area you're all familiar with, and that's with the Cloverleaf Building and the adjacent parking lot. The Cloverleaf Building has a kitchen in order to feed people. It has restrooms for men and women that are quite large, and also have very large showers in them. And it's air-conditioned, it's got heat, and can provide the ability for people to get out of the heat when needed and into the, into the heat in the winter when it starts to get cold. So it'll provide cooling and warming shelter space. It can also provide health services. But it really definitely provides that sanitation piece that is important in a village like this during this COVID response. The adjacent Cloverleaf parking lot, it would be fenced and screened in order to kind of mitigate visibility issues and concerns by neighbors, although it is set quite a bit back, you all are familiar with that. So it's not like it's right at the edge of a neighborhood or right on the sidewalk. And it's, it's almost all fenced already. So there's just so many pros about that facility. There also were some other options on the grounds that we looked at. You know, we have a lot of large grass parking lots. So really, after several weeks of really discussing the pros and cons of the area, we determined that the Cloverleaf has so many good attributes in that parking lot that's right next to it that we can put the, the campers on. Because when it does start to rain, having campers be in a grass parking lot would be a little bit difficult for them. Next slide, please. Marnie talked a little bit about RV parking. And while we're really focused on the safe sleeping village first, the second step is likely to be looking and identifying for a parking location. We, we do have a very limited area for RV parking at West Side Commons currently. It's not very well-suited for this type of, of sleep camping for the homeless. But there are other locations on the property that we will be looking at. But right now, we're really focusing on the other safe sleeping. But we did want to bring up that RV parking is something that we will be a next step on. Next slide, please. So our next step is coordinating with Hillsborough on permitting requirements. They do need to issue a temporary use permit for us to be able to do this on the property. Annette and her team are working very closely with the Hillsborough Fire Department and Hillsborough Police Department in order to make sure that every base is covered, that every jurisdiction is happy with what's going on. I believe they're working on finalizing a contract with Project Homeless Connect in order to be the service provider onsite. Our PIO, Lisa Dupre, who's working in PIO's office now, is working on FAQs for the COVID website to address community concerns right on the website about this safe sleep village. And, and they're also working on developing community strategies for notifying neighbors and local businesses that this will likely be an area that will be housing homeless shortly. So notifying them via Nextdoor social media, and then also being able to answer those, those questions. And Annette and her team are going to be organizing homeless outreach efforts to start moving, inviting people from the camps into the, into the village. And I think that is the last slide.
The only thing I would add is that Sia and I have also had conversations with the Hillsborough City Manager and Assistant City Manager. So they're aware of the, the plan to do this.
Okay, let's see if we have Commissioner questions. I'll start on Zoom. Commissioner Rogers, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, two questions. One is, there's always, unfortunately, there's some amount of policing that needs to be done, some sort of supervision. So my first question is, who is doing that?
So Annette might be able to tell you exactly who, but.
And Annette, so you know, we do have a microphone over here, too.
Because the, the plan does definitely include security. I don't know if we've identified, let her walk up here.
So if I understood the question, who will be providing security onsite? And so Project Homeless Connect will have multiple staff persons that will be onsite managing all. managing all aspects of the operation 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Part of that will be a gate security person who will be staffing the gate, because as part of the program, any person entering the gate, and that includes staff as well as homeless, will need to complete a wellness check so that we can verify that nobody is currently running temperatures or experiencing symptoms that we should be aware of before they come into the village.
Thank you. My second question is more legal. I mean, I don't profess to have expertise in the area, but this is a temporary use. When it ceases, if we don't have other facilities to accommodate these folks, how do you remove them from those areas? And Alan, if he's sitting there, I know we've had other issues with people who didn't want to leave facilities when either contracts expired or when it was timed. So are we exposing ourselves to any liability for providing a temporary facility that we don't have long-term solution for?
Well, I can jump in here, Commissioner Rogers. This is unlike, you know, your public spaces like a park or a sidewalk. This is, you know, a fairgrounds that's fenced off. So I think we should be able to lawfully move these people off when we close the facility. So, you know, I'm sure you're aware of the Boise versus the Boise homeless person case, and I think that's what you're referring to. And so again, this is, I think this fairgrounds property is distinguishable from the sidewalks that they're removing the people in the Boise case. And again, hopefully, we will have other shelters open at the time, so they will have other places to go.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Trese.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you for thinking about this. Thank you for working on making this site available. A couple of questions that I have are, what are the plans if this is oversubscribed? In other words, I can imagine a situation where we may not have enough capability to provide sites for everybody that wants to be there. That's one question. And the other question is, do we have staff that will be providing the janitorial services for the restrooms, for the showers, and that type of thing? But most importantly, I want to say thank you for thinking about this.
Thank you. I will address the first part of your question and invite Leah and Marnie if they want to add. So over-prescribing. So we are targeting for four very specific encampments that are very large and trying to reduce the numbers of persons in those campsites. So when we do the outreach, we'll be working with them through kind of a phased period over a week to invite them to come into the village. We know that some may not come initially, and we'll send others to find out how it works and let them know. We also know that we have more campers in those four campsites than what we have capacity. We have about 90 to 100 persons that were counted there the first part of June during our outreach. So we are looking at alternative sites. We've continued to do that work. It's just that we feel the urgency to get something open and as we begin to work through contracts or discussions with other site owners.
And I agree about the urgency issue, and thank you for working hard to get it done. I was just concerned about whether or not it would fill up right away.
So I'll just add, Annette's completely correct, and I'll just add that we also, that's why we have different strategies, because we think for some people, the hoteling will work better, or the family promise shelters. And we don't, we don't think, we're not that naive to think that the camps will be completely cleared out and that, you know, or when they, some of them will be shut down so that they can do cleaning, but they'll probably re-congregate somewhere else. But if we can get half the people into a safer environment and have a little bit less density, then that's a positive thing, and that helps to reduce the risk of disease transmission.
And then Commissioner Trese, to your second question about sanitation at the site. So Project Homeless Connect was selected to operate this project on behalf of Washington County, basically because they have experience operating congregate shelters. And they recently operated a 60-day non, 60-day congregate shelter, one in Hillsborough and one in Beaverton, where they needed to provide all of that sanitation and janitorial work as part of that operation. So we have protocols, and we're working with county's public health staff who attend my weekly team meeting on this project development, who will be aiding and supporting through that process to make sure that all staff are trained to do that work. In addition, Washington County, myself and Julie Case, will be visiting the site and ensuring that our contractor has the support and the supplies they needed. And that includes, we understand that there are specific supplies needed to do cleaning at the Cloverleaf. And so as the county department, we will be working to secure those supplies and ensure that those appropriate supplies are available so that we use the right ones.
Are there any, are there, are there any other services, given the fact that this is a much more of a controlled situation? Are there any other services that we can provide in this type of sleeping village?
Yes. So as part of this work, both staff from mental health, addictions, and also the Emergency Operations Center are attending the weekly development team meetings. And so we are looking to provide onsite support services, kind of in the little alcove area in the back of Cloverleaf, where we can kind of have a private area for individuals who want to meet with the health department's staff. In addition, we are working on our Built for Zero initiative, where we recently, in the first four months, have rehoused 31 chronic homeless individuals in permanent housing with over 100 years of homelessness. And we know that while we're out looking for some of these individuals on our by-name list, that we're not finding them, because they're very difficult to locate when they're just going about their daily life and they're not in the campsite when we go to do outreach. So we will be coordinating and aligning our Built for Zero initiative to rehouse chronic homeless persons with this project.
Thank you for your dedication to this effort. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So Commissioners in the room. Commissioner Skelton?
Nothing other than, thank you for doing all this.
Commissioner Willie?
I'm good.
Okay. I have a few questions. My recollection of the parking lot, if I'm thinking of the right one, the pavement condition isn't all that great, if I recall. So I'm wondering how that will work for campers?
I'll let Annette answer that in just a second, but there are some spots in the Cloverleaf parking lot specifically, too, that are definitely not great. Our staff was just working with a city contractor on fixing some of those parking lot areas. So it should be done prior to the village moving in, but it's still not, it's not like a brand-new, beautiful parking lot, for sure.
Thank you, Chair, for your question. As part of how we're setting up at the tents, where they'll be sleeping outside, is to ensure the physical distancing. But we will take four pallets and put them together as a unit, and then put two pieces of plywood on top of that so that we have a perfect square, and then a pad goes on top of that, and then the tent. The tents will be sized such that persons can put their personal belongings and secure them inside of their tent, which will reduce the appearance of extra storage space and being responsible to secure people's property and manage that. And so we will be lining those on the parking lot to ensure that the pathways are very clear. If we needed to have ambulatory services or others to be able to access in there, that we're taking that all into consideration.
Guys are awesome. I'm not surprised at all. I shouldn't be surprised at all. Thank you so much for thinking through these details. And ordinarily, I think the facilities folks for the whole West Side Commons takes care of with different events provisions for more active garbage service, you know, than usual. So does a regular maintenance crew make sure that it's adequate, or does Family Promise contracted that out? How does that go?
So garbage service will, I would imagine, be managed by Project Homeless Connect. We will have garbage cans and dumpsters available for them to use, but it will be done by that organization.
Okay, great. And then my last question is, well, I should first see, are there any other questions that have come to mind from Commissioners?
Well, you referred to the ambulance access. I'm assuming you've coordinated with the Hillsborough Fire Department as well, because if something would happen at the Cloverleaf, obviously, they can't get to it, so...
Yes. So I actually have 10 years' experience working in the fire service. And so to me, safety, public safety, not only for the first responders, but as for the citizens residing in that area, has always become a priority, whether it's winter shelters or this. So we are working with the fire marshal for the city of Hillsborough. We recognize that we need to have fire extinguishers a minimum every 75 feet, so we're coordinating that piece, and it's part of the layout plan. Also ensuring that all staff are trained on the use of fire extinguishers and that they're secured but easily accessible. And then lastly, as with my winter shelters, I will be uploading all of the contact information into the WACA system through the CAD Special Information. So any first responders, whether it's city of Hillsborough or Washington County, whether it's law enforcement, fire, EMS, they will all know who the contacts are for that operation and what the operation is, that it's 50 people living in tents.
And for fire truck access, if there was specifically something that happened with the Cloverleaf Building itself, because they could not access with the fire truck through the parking lot, there are two other gate accesses that they have access to to get into the facility. Yeah. And the amphitheater.
So my last question, and I fully support this. I appreciate all the work that you've put into it. And you got a lot of, you know, you talked about permitting and whatnot, and it's already July 21st, and so there are only four complete months, August through the end of November, before, you mentioned the December 1st date for the winter shelters opening, starting December 1. So I want you to be able to move promptly and go forth. What I, Philip isn't here, though he may be listening on Zoom. I'm really wondering about a good, strong statement of support from the Board of Commissioners. I know, for example, something as simple as our first-ever adoption of a pride proclamation last year really helped our staff in terms of some of the activities that were planned, because then it was a policy of the board. And it just made them feel better and better able to respond to constituent concerns. So I, I'm perfectly willing to call the question here with my colleagues, but rather than us just saying thumbs up, move forward, I'm wondering if, for the sake of any constituent concerns or whatnot about, you know, why, yes, we have a public health crisis, but why are you making it easy for people to live in a homeless way? I want to make sure that we, that you have the full backing of the Board of Commissioners. And so I'll leave it to you, Mr. CAO, to figure out if we need to actually take a vote on a resolution and order of support, or if the thumbs up is the way to do it, and then our PIO experts.
Our understanding was that a thumbs up was enough for us to move forward, but at the same time, I love your idea of having a strong statement, so we can certainly work with Lisa, who's been assigned to help us with the messaging about this, to get that strong statement from you, if that works for everybody. Unless I'm, Brad's still nodding his head yes, so...
Oh, Commissioner Rogers, are you okay to proceed? Do you just shake your head? Or thumbs up? We can only see you from nose up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lean forward and sit it back. I'm fine with a general statement, once I see it. I'm a little nervous about just adopting something that we don't even see the wording on or how it's portrayed, but...
That's not what we're recommending today. What we're recommending today is a thumbs up for staff to move forward, as they have fully described today.
Not the statement?
No.
All right, fine.
If there is a statement, it will come back to us, and you'll have an, we'll have an opportunity to discuss it, wordsmith, if we need to, before we act.
And just for you, for you all on our timeline, the thumbs up today, it would be our goal and our hope that we would move forward within a couple of weeks. That might be optimistic, but within a couple of weeks, that we would be ready to start inviting campers to our site.
March 1st is right around the corner in a couple of weeks, so I'm...
Yes.
Geez, I did it again. I don't know what it is with months. I think one thing...
March, August.
And I'm really blessed to have colleagues who get it, that I'm verbally challenged on months. August 1st is right two weeks away. So, yes. But you've, you probably couldn't see it over there, but you had thumbs up from the two on the screen and three thumbs here, so thank you so much for all of your work on this and getting our community to a healthier and safer means than we have today.
I just want to end with how great it is to have Leah and Annette on our public health team. It's been a great partnership, and I really appreciate their expertise and support and jumping right in and helping us solve this. We could not have done it without them.
We're happy to be involved.
Great.
And I think you already, I think you've already provided the kernel of what this letter could say, because you talked about, we want to keep these people safe. Everyone is entitled to being in a place where they can be safe on a health standpoint. And then for the rest of us, we don't want to be infected either. So it's just rational self-interest, if nothing else. But I think there's something deeper than that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, would you like to just stay at the table?
I'm just going to go ahead and stay here, since the next four items are mine to present to you.
We are going to call a break somewhere in between on some of these items, though.
That's totally great. You just let me know when.
Probably after the next two.
Great. Okay, so jumping right in. First item to present to you is a request from the Fairgrounds Advisory Committee to amend the FAC bylaws. And I want to thank Chair Harrington, who is the Board of Commissioners representative, on the FAC. We had a great Zoom meeting with the FAC a few weeks ago, and staff presented a few bylaw recommendation changes, and we ended up looking at the entire bylaws and really, in my opinion, making some excellent changes that we're proposing to you, that the FAC is proposing for you to consider adopting these changes. And if you are okay with moving forward with these changes, I would come back on August 4th for final approval.
So Commissioners, I assume that you've had the opportunity to just take a look at the rev-mark version that was in our packet. So rather than have Leah go by section and section, I'll just ask if you have any questions or concerns.
Yeah, let me grab my notes. So on the Public Safety Committee, we were also making some modifications to, I guess, enhance or provide for diversity language on the committee. And they were struggling with what terminology, what verbiage they should be using. And so I asked Steve, interim CAO, to provide us with some direction, because I think all of our boards and commissions are going to be going through this whole process, and I wanted to have some consistency in the verbiage so that everybody didn't have to hash and rehash. And so I've asked Steve, it looks like Cia's coming up, gonna be the answer person on this, to maybe provide some direction and how we would, as I call it, plug and play. So we would have a policy and... So we would have a policy, and all we'd have to do is refer to the policy. And so I'm sorry, Cia, I'm going ahead there, but give us what you're thinking there.
Steve, did you want to leap in before I?
And Alan's here, too.
Well, I was going to handle it, yes.
Go ahead.
What, we first, I came up with this in the reference to the Public Safety Coordinating Council, I think, as Commissioner Willie mentioned. And we're going through this with all of the different committee bylaws, and we are getting different versions. So our suggestion was that, once the Equity Officer is on board, we have them develop a policy that would cover this issue for all committees, in terms of what the approach is and what we're trying to do. Then the committee bylaws, instead of trying to get wording fitting in all of them, could simply reference the policy that would apply and use that. And so that was, that was an attempt to try to get us then to be consistent throughout all of our groups as we're doing that. So what, what we did with public safety at this point is simply put in a, if you will, a holding language until we can come back and fix it with a policy adoption.
So I'm expecting, right as the Board liaison to the Fairgrounds Advisory Committee, we're each liaisons to different committees, that our CAO's office and our COO's office, our county council's office are two in a box on this. And so that's what I count on. So when we had the legal beagle in the FAC meeting, I assumed that, that, that these two points are the point of cross-fertilization, that the checkpoint shouldn't be at five different commission levels, so.
Well, that's what we're attempting to do with putting a policy together that everybody could reference. We've not, obviously, we've not connected on that yet, because it's, it's a prospective thing in terms of when the Equity Officer comes on board.
But at least from the council, was fine with the language that is being proposed here. I know I talked to Brad about that, and he was okay with this proposed amendments to the bylaws. But again, the Board doesn't have to do it. They can just leave it.
But that just means that when we get that boilerplate language, that it's part of a housekeeping, is getting, getting all the updates in there.
Right.
And that's our idea, is just put in a place saver now, and then when we've got the policy, we can go back and install it.
Okay, now I understand. Because I want to make sure that the committees can still move forward
Yes.
and what they want to do, and not be held up by that. Okay.
Right, no, it's.
I'm with you, great, I understand it now.
So we'll have different versions until we can get a policy put together that then we'll incorporate it.
Okay. As long as our different versions don't get us in any trouble. But I know county councils wouldn't let us do. Thanks.
So when you say, Steve, when you're, you're talking about, in this particular situation, it's 3.1.1, the red modification, members of communities that experience social inequities will be given preference for membership on the committee. That's the part that we would do the plug and play once we get the policy in place through the Equity Officer. Is that what, is that what you're saying, so?
No, we would also, I think we would try to do one, which is, that's the overall policy. And 3.3 would have something to describe the kinds of community members that would be sought in that, in that area.
Well, I guess we could cross that bridge when we get to it. I kind of like 3.3, but, but I get what we're trying to do. Again, I'm trying to make this consistent and so that all the boards and commissions don't have to invent their own wheels.
Yeah, and I think we'll, we'll sort that out when we get there, in terms of exactly what we've got to do or can leave as, as is. Because I also like the 3.3 language, because it's broader than, than what I would see that doing.
Okay. So a couple of other things on 3.6, the, the blue 3.6. It says, the last part is approved absences may be granted by the Chair. Maybe it's because when you, when that says Chair, I think of you, not of the Chair of the, of this committee.
Oh, so what if we insert the word committee chair?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that makes sense.
So, yeah, when I read that, I thought, wow, okay. I don't think we had to do that. So anyway, that, on 3.7, what was I saying, remainder of term and X? Oh, we don't refer to if we remove someone, that the person we replace them with is just for the remainder of that term. So we're not putting a term to the replacement person? Or do they just start new? Which screws up your term rotations.
Commissioner Willie, it states the vacancies resulting from the removal will be filled per the county policies and procedures governing boards and commissions appointments. And so at that point, you can clarify that when you're appointing them, you're appointing them to fulfill their, the prior one's term.
Okay, so that's in there?
That's on the next page.
The top of the next page.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, yeah, there we go, okay. All right, and then it says, I'm accustomed to ex officio members not having a vote.
Now, that's very confusing here in Washington County.
Because I, I don't make, when I'm sitting on another committee, I don't make motions, I don't do seconds, I don't do any of that, because I'm ex officio. And here, though, it looks like you have full voting rights. So is that by design, or is that by?
It's committee by committee, is the answer I've been given, over and over, from one committee to the next.
And in this committee, ex officio does have voting privileges.
Yeah, that, well, that's what I was reading in here, and I was just thinking, well, okay, is there, so there's no rule that says one versus the other, that it's committee by committee? They get to make those choices, okay. And then, okay, then I think that is all I have on that, just reading through this.
On, on your chair comment, Commissioner Willie, just, just note that at 3.2, the second line, towards the end of the second line, it says, one member shall be the president in parentheses, Chair.
Yeah.
So that's, that's sort of that typical reference by parenthetical, but we could clarify further on down. But just so you know, that there's a point there where Chair, for the purposes of this document, doesn't refer to the Chair or the Commissioners.
Yeah, and I figured it was probably just me, because I sat on this, so I referred to Catherine as Chair. And so everybody else is going, no, I get it. It's the Chair of the FAC, not the Chair of the Commissioners.
Actually, the, the point that Commissioner Scouton is mentioning is referring to the Fair Board. And they have a president, and that's used Chair there. The actual Chair, Vice Chair language is over in 5.1.1, under Article 5 Officers.
Yeah, that's true. So I, I mean, that was just my thought.
I think it's a great catch.
Yeah.
I thought that was a great catch.
And we could remove that Chair in parentheses next to the Fair Board President, because they, that is how the Fair Board is referred to as President. They don't refer that position to as Chair. So we could remove that wording.
Remove that one, sure. Good grammatical changes. Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Treese, any questions or comments?
My, yeah, my only question, just, I guess, more for my edification. Steve, I don't know if you're the one drafting or Leah, but explain to me how the logistics work of the underrepresented groups. If, if you had zero underrepresented groups, and you had a vacancy, would you still have to consider that? Or how, how does it work? I understand the intent of what you're trying to do, but I don't know how it works with the bylaws that you're proposing.
Well, Commissioner Rogers, I'll jump in. I think that's something we'll just have to play by ear and work out, to new language. And we're, we'll get some guidance from our Diversity Officer, and that'll, that will help. And again, if we have some problems with it, we can always come back and clarify.
Well, then I would just simply place a footnote on, because I heard, again, and I think it's a smart move, that we have some sort of generalized principles that we apply to all committees. And this one's expanding a little bit, in terms of numbers. But it would be good that we don't have to think about that down the road too far. It would be something that would be thought about as we go through this, so that we don't have those logistical issues at some point. So I just put it as a placeholder.
I want to make sure I understand this. Section 3.3 talks about three specific types of experience we're looking for. Tourism industry, community business stakeholders, youth education stakeholders, and agriculture livestock. And then, of course, it goes on to say, "and to other interests as determined by the Board of Commissioners." What we've done here is add language to make sure we also are getting to our intent at diversity through our traditionally underrepresented committees. So this is not saying that you're limited to one person from any of the other four mentioned industries, but is good general language to make sure that you're making efforts towards this.
Right, and the opening phrase is including but not limited to.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm trying to make sure I understand what you're, what you're really getting at.
Yeah, I'm listening and I'm looking at the language, and I'm trying to understand in my own mind, in our effort to be very sensitive and inclusive, if appointments come up, are we in any way required only to look at certain underrepresented groups? Or are we free to consider anyone? In the policies, I understand you're going to, they're not here, but as you craft them, it's going to fit all groups. So we would be looking at all candidates or only restricted to certain candidates if they're felt that was underrepresented?
I, I don't think the, the idea is to restrict how the committee would be composed, but make it clear what the intent is in terms of looking at the diversity of the membership.
Well, I, I like that, and I don't want to belabor it, but I, I like your wording that that's the intent or the understanding. Sometimes we all get tied in knots about what things really say later on. So I guess my mind is always trying to forecast what else, and I guess you can't always do that. But, okay, I get, as long as the policy says it's the intent, and that's fine. I'm done.
Open the very first sentence, the section that says.
I can't hear you, Dick.
Will generally represent a wide.
Yes, represented diverse.
Will generally represent a diverse and wide variety of interests. So we're not thinking about, oh, we're only going to have these kinds of people and no one else. We're looking at a wide range, including, not limited to, people who have been traditionally underrepresented, and then a whole list of other people. So I think the idea is, the spirit of this, as well as the letter, is to get everybody on this thing, including, let's not forget, people who we have traditionally not been included on the Board. That's the way I read all this. Sort of untie knots rather than getting into knots.
Okay. Any other questions or, or comments? I think, short of adopting these today, I think you've, I'm hearing general approval.
Great, I will come back in two weeks, and I will make a couple of those small wording changes that we discussed for two weeks from now. And then the next one, and then we can take a little break, is appointing members to the Fairgrounds Advisory Committee. So now that we have general approval for those amendments to the bylaws, we can move forward with appointments for the FAC, as well as appointing two people to these new expanded positions per the bylaws. We did have quite a few people apply to be on the FAC, which is really great. We have struggled over the years to get people to apply to be on this committee. And so the fact that we actually have some people to look at is wonderful. So we have two positions that are, that expired recently, and those incumbents are seeking reappointment, and that's Carolyn McCormick from the WCVA and community member Hal Ballard. And then with the two new expanded seats for the bylaws, staff recommendation is appointing Nancy Thomas and Melissa DeBalzo as the two new FAC members to serve a three-year term ending December 2022.
So I have some comments on this, unless somebody else wants to jump in first. I, I think in reviewing the applications, Nancy Thomas is a great addition. I actually wouldn't appoint Hal Ballard, reappoint him. I think we've got other members who have more pertinent, sorry, I'm struggling over my word there, experience. You know, we've, we're entering a new time now with the management of the Westside Commons and the launching of the Event Center. And I think there's different expertise than, that we're looking for. So, so we have, so Bill Ganger is there for the Fair Board position. And you have him as, no, Gary Seidel is there for the Fair Board.
Correct.
So Bill Ganger is there right now for the, that livestock kind of expertise.
Bill Ganger did apply for the FAC. He also serves on the Fair Board. But he did apply for the FAC, and that's why he's on the matrix.
Okay. I think having that rural expertise beyond just the Fair Board is good, if he actually contributes that. And I think we've got Ajoy Naven Chakrapani on the Fair Board now, and that's really good. What I'm not convinced is that we need both Carolyn McCormick from the Visitors Association, who does a really good job of representing the hotels, and Melissa DeBalzo. And the reason that, it's not the people, it's the expertise we're looking for. When I reviewed the applications and from Hector Hinosa's coming and speaking with us, he has represented a bunch of work that he's been involved with, with the OSU Extension and the work that they've been doing on supporting Latino education through the university, as well as in through high school. And so I was wondering if that would bring an element of youth as well. So you said that there were four appointments. So I feel really good and rock solid on two of them, Carolyn McCormick and Nancy Thomas. Bill, I think, would bring in the rural. And so then it's really a question of, do we try and add in the, that youth experience that I'm assuming Hector Hinosa could bring, which means we have, wouldn't have the opportunity to bring in Melissa with more hotel experience?
I, I spoke at length to Hector, and he would be an excellent member on the FAC as well. I, I don't think that we can go wrong with really any of the applicants that we have in front of us.
Hector Hinosa is also a part of that, sort of those early Hispanic families that came to Washington County that were part of the founding groups of Centro. So there's very deep Latino roots.
He, he did indicate that he used to be heavily involved in county committees years ago, and that he would, is really looking forward to getting back involved again. So this would give him that involvement he's looking for.
I kind of lean towards Hector Hinosa myself.
Yeah, so that, that ends up being the slate of four that I would be the most excited about. Carolyn McCormick, Nancy Thomas, Bill Ganger, and Hector. about. Carolyn McCormick, Nancy Thomas, Bill Ganger, and Hector Hinosa.
You're going to be okay with, I mean, Bill Ganger's a, a great member of the Fair Board. And realizing you already have Gary Seidel, or the president of the Fair Board, in the assigned spot, you're going to be okay with two Fair Board members being on this committee?
Well, no, as I talked about, I talked about Bill representing rural, and so he's not a Fair Board rep. That's the position that Gary Seidel has.
Okay. I just didn't think you wanted crossover as to a singular person actually wearing two hats to the thing, even though they're not representing the board.
No, I get it. I, I get it. Well, no, I wouldn't be expecting, I would be expecting him to bring in a rural perspective. But I have to-
Bill's a great representative for that. I mean, he does a great job on the Fair Board.
And he's highly involved in local livestock, as well as mentoring youth in livestock programs. So he does bring-
I would really like to see that rural representation. So that's why I had him in the, the slate of four.
I'm okay with it.
Great.
And maybe next time around, if Carol, well, Carolyn will have reached her term limit, right? So hopefully Melissa will maybe be willing then.
Yeah, I think she will be. And talking to her, she's just looking forward to getting involved in, in county committees as well. This was her first application in, so I'm sure she will be thrilled to, to be involved and get in the future.
Yeah, great.
Okay, great. I will bring back those four recommendations in two weeks.
Is everybody else okay with that slate?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, I didn't do, well, never mind. So we're going to take a break now. That'll leave us with items nine, 10, and 11 left. Everybody okay with a break? You want 10 minutes or 15? We have been taking 15 because that's usually how long we take.
Okay, let's be serious and say 15 without more.
Okay. So we'll take a 15-minute break and come back at 3:10. Yes, ma'am?
I am, I just want to remind people that I'll be leaving early.
Yes, at 3:30. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Hello, everyone. It's 3:11. Sorry for the commissioners out in Zoom land. We're a minute behind. So the next topics on the agenda are still with Leah Perkins Hagley, the proposals for awarding contracts for Westside Commons catering services, and then the next one for the Event Center concession and alcohol management services. So boom, boom. Take it away, Leah.
Great. Well, thank you for the little break in between what feels-
Great. Well, thank you for the little break in between what feels like a very long marathon for me today with four items. But this is, these are the two exciting ones. So the Event Center is coming to construction completion. And it looks like we're going to get you all scheduled for a tour very soon. We're very excited. And that means we've got some contracts that we have to get into place for when we are able to open at some point in the future. And we did go out for bid for catering services for when clients need catering services in the building for whatever purpose that they are doing it, whether it's a dinner or a gala, or they just simply want boxed lunches for their vendors. And we want to establish a catering list so our clients can choose from a variety of customer, client menus they want to work with, who they want to work with, they can negotiate. And but we wanted to make sure that we were providing them a good list of qualified caterers to work in our amazing kitchen that we have at the Event Center. We did have 16 applicants total apply. Five are the ones that made it through the minimum qualifications from the committee. The committee consisted of myself, somebody from purchasing, one of our event people on our staff at the Westside Commons. And some of you may know Ben Rowe, who used to work for Metro. He was on the committee, which was great because he added a lot of great perspective. And of those 16 applicants, only one was COBID certified. Even though there was a lot of women and minority-owned businesses that did apply. And we do have some on this list of five that we're bringing forward to you. But I did want to point out that Cam and Cam was the only COBID certified applicant. And they are in the five that we're asking you to consider.
What does COBID certified mean?
So, sorry, was somebody else going to speak?
C-O-B-I-D, not C-O-V. COBID.
Oh, goodness, it sounds so close to COBID.
Certified business.
Got it. Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, I thought it was the other. That's because it's all that's in my head.
E as in boy, not V as in victor.
No, I thought it was a good question, though, because I don't know what COBID certified is. So, wait, COBID or COVID, I still don't know, so.
So I don't know the exact term of what COBID stands for.
Certified Office of Business Inclusion and Diversity?
It's something like that.
Yeah.
Oh.
And it's a certification from the state.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we do have five great caterers with a, and the proposals are all linked for you. And this is who we are recommending to be on the list. I do want to point out that this, we will go out every year to add people to the list. We definitely want to make sure that our clients have a wide variety, so this will be who we start with. And we hope that some will fall off and some will add on. And it will be an ever-evolving list of, of great caterers that our clients have to choose from.
Do we have Commissioner Rogers on the Zoom? Okay, great. We just can't see him, that's all.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, terrific. I only have one question, I think, that applies to both of these. Actually, I'm sorry, I have two questions. But the question that I have that spans each of these is, I want to make sure that the Event Center, as a brand-new facility and a new operations team, has the op, has the opportunity to have contracts in place for a long enough period of time to support business certainty and business operations, but not so long that the learnings of, say, the first two, three years have you feel constrained for the next two years, so for a five-year period. So in your catering one, it talks about how each of these will have a one-year contract and can be extended up to an additional four years. So let's say after three years, you decide, you know, we want to do this differently. It sounds like you have that opportunity with catering.
Absolutely.
So then I'll have that same question on the next one, so just know that I have that.
Sure.
And then, I was trying to get my head around the numbers as I reviewed your packet material. There is 3,000 patrons maximum total, or capacity in the Event Center. Did I read that right?
For, for serving food, yes.
And, and then, but only 480 for banquets?
It depends on the area. So 480 in the, the conference center. And then in the Event Center, the expo hall can seat up to like 1,780 people there. So combined, and I've got, those numbers are not quite accurate. 480 is accurate in the expo hall. I can't, or in the Conference Center, I can't recall the number off the top of my head in the expo hall. But those are separate dining areas.
Okay.
And then there is a maximum number that can be served at any one time for seated dining per fire code.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I have everything I need. How about you folks? Any questions?
Just the bottom line is that this is something really new in accounting. That kind of a venue, those kinds of numbers that can be served.
Yes.
This kind of a facility and opportunity and venue is really something new for us. Exciting.
Yes, new and exciting. We're, we're very excited to finally get to open and start having these opportunities.
It'll be great when we can, yeah, finally open up and, and exhibit that.
Phase three, here we come.
I'm okay with this five, and I'm okay with the five that you've recommended it mean on the list, so I'm good with this.
So I will come back in two weeks with a final request for approval.
Yep. So it's just the second one on the Event Center concession and alcohol management where I have a...
So the, to answer your question about the concession and alcohol management, and I totally understand what you're saying. And this is a little bit different than catering. This company, Pacific Rim, is, they are putting out a significant capital outlay. They are actually putting all the equipment in these concession stands. So we do have a schedule for buyout if we choose to. We, we can cancel the contract by, you know, either they can cancel or we can cancel. And then there's a, a schedule of buyout for the equipment when it comes to that. So the contract does allow for us to mutually or individually cancel if needed. But we would have a sign, you know, depending on when that occurs, we would have to purchase out that equipment.
So one of the questions that I have is, so if someone is having a banquet or food from the caterer and alcohol is involved, does that go then to the concession and alcohol management?
Yes, yes. The OLCC wants to approve one alcohol provider for the site.
Got it.
So no matter what kind of event you have, if it involves alcohol, this will be the OLCC licensed provider on the site.
So I want, I didn't quite know how to navigate this question through the materials. So I'm asking, if you have some, you know, fundraiser dinners, and it's not unusual for the event person, company, nonprofit, whatever,
Right.
to have wine that is donated for the purposes of that event. Does your concessionaire agreement allow for that?
Yes, it does. They would, per OLCC rules, they would take possession from the client that procures the donated alcoholic beverage. And then they would have to serve it under their license, but then they wouldn't, but it would be, they would probably charge a fee to actually pour it and serve it, which is typical. But they definitely have the ability to do that.
So I was a little surprised that Pacific Rim was the sole responder. But then I looked at their, their application, and it was like fair, 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 which kind of made me a little uneasy because the Event Center is a whole lot more than a fair.
Well, I, I think that, and when I was reviewing it a couple of days ago, that stood out to me as well. And the one thing that I know very well, but not most other people, when they say fair, they mean fair grounds. So, for example, this company provides alcohol and concession services year-round at the Oregon State Fair and Expo Grounds. But they call it the Oregon State Fair, even though it's, they don't do it just for the fair event, they do it for all their events. Same thing for Central Washington State Fairgrounds. They provide alcohol and concession services for all of their events year-round, not just their fairs. But it's just one of those terms that people say, oh, we do it at the Oregon State Fair. But it's the Oregon State Fairgrounds for all of their year-round events, including their fair.
Well, none of their pictures.
I know. I noticed that as well.
I was really surprised that Airmark didn't respond.
I was surprised as well, and I'm told it's because of the equipment investment that we were expecting.
Okay. All righty. Those were all my questions.
Yeah, just to make sure that I caught that. They were the only bidders then, is that correct?
They were the only respondent, yeah. It was surprising to me as well.
What had you expected?
And there was, I had, I had talked to Airmark, and they thought that they would, they would apply. And then there was another one, I'm just drawing a blank on their name, that is, is a provider as well for a lot of different venues throughout the region, and they didn't deploy as well. And when I followed up with them, it was the investment of equipment capital that was, they, they realized that the business that they already had, they didn't need to add this on top of investment, investment with equipment.
Can you remind me the timeframe that you put the bids out for? Was that pre-COVID or?
It was pre-COVID, yes.
Okay. All righty.
All right.
Anything else, commissioners? Do you have what you need for us to move forward with getting it on the agenda? Yep, I see thumbs up here.
Okay, well, then I will see you all in two weeks.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. See, that marathon wasn't so bad.
That's right.
All righty, so that's it for the, the public portion of our work session for today. And now I'm going to ask for a motion to move into executive session pursuant to ORS 196.660 sub 2 sub H.
Sue moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero.